We are being broadcast live, but we -- I'm -- the chair is going to ask to go into executive session, which will not be televised. But anyways, the part of our meeting that is broadcast live, it will be broadcast live on local channels 8 and 1072, streamed live on the Town of Mashpee website, www.mashbma.gov/channeleight. The chair -- so the first order is executive session. The chair declares that discussing this matter, which is the Southworth Mashpee Properties versus Town of Mashpee Planning Board, it's a court case in the Massachusetts Land Court case number 24 MISC 000372, Prenz HPS. The chair declares that this matter, discussing this matter in open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the planning board. The chair would recognize a vote, a motion to go into executive session per Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A3. Give her a second.
Second.
I will call vote. Karen?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Mary Wagon, yes. Okay, so now we'll shut down the TV.
So, okay, so, welcome back to the Wednesday, November twentieth, two thousand and twenty four, meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board. We've just come out of executive session, returning to public session. Today, again, is Wednesday, November twentieth, two thousand and twenty four. This meeting is being held at Mashpee Town Hall, Waquiot Room, Sixteen Great Neck Road North, Mashpee Broadcast Live on local channels eight and ten seventy-two, streamed live on the town of Mashpee website, www.mashpma.gov backslash channel hyphen eight. So I'd like to invite everybody to stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me.
The Pledge of Allegiance, under the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a set of meeting minutes from November sixth, two thousand and twenty four. Anybody have any comments or edits?
I think they-
To approve them as written.
Toby, a second.
A second. All on the paper say aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. There is no public comment?
Can I interject the email that Ed Pesci sent us at this point? Because it's not one of those, you know, plans that you're going to be talking about the rest of-
How about under Board Engineer Report?
Well, I'm just saying that you have the Housing Production Plan, you have the ADU by law, and raise and replace all ahead of that report-
Okay, let's jump to, let's jump-
This'll go quick.
Okay, there's no public comment. Okay, so Board Engineer Report, go ahead, Tom.
Well, here he goes. He says, and I'm going to pass these, these are pictures that came with his email. I didn't want to pronounce, they're all, no, they're all different pictures that you need to take a look at. Those are the conditions he found on October seventeenth. All right, and-
Now, this is an email regarding-
That was regarding Aqui Highlands, and I'll read it to you. I read the minutes, I saw the discussion, and it was held at last meeting regarding Aqui Highlands. "I thought I should email you all an update on this. The board voted to require the two thousand cash security, now the punch list satisfactory completed. The amount was based on my recommendation this past summer when I asked Mr. Morin to loam and seed some disturbed areas on the sides of Carriage Road. This cost to do that was approximately fifteen hundred dollars, so I thought, it's supposed to be two thousand dollars, that's basically two dollars, but two thousand dollars is a reasonable surety to make sure the work are completed and allow for the release of the tripartite agreement. Mr. Moron," that's how he spelled it, "proceeded to perform all the work satisfactorily, and I made several visits out there to ensure the seeded areas were being watered and the grass was growing. I'm happy to report that as of my final site visit on October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty four, the grass condition was healthy and stable, and Mr. Morin further made repairs on ten potholes that I count on Blue Castle Drive, gravel repairs. I have attached a few photos from his site visit. As of this writing, my opinion is that this work is satisfactory completed, and that the discretion of the board, the requirement for the two thousand surety may, may no longer be necessary."
Okay.
I don't know if you have any questions. Now, I passed around the pictures. Most of the discussion you had at that meeting, when you, you know, signed the tripartite agreement release, was about the mound of dirt-
And it's still there.
And, and that's, and it's, in his pictures, there's, there's a mound of dirt with plants growing on it, and another dirt pile. And I also noticed that regarding grass growing in, there's, there's a catch base, not a catch basin, a, what you'd call a-
Swale?
Yeah, supposed to be a grass swale, to have some nitrogen reduction, and I'm looking at it, and there's no grass in it, it's a hundred percent dirt. So, I, I, I would take this up with Ed, you know, some other time, but that doesn't look like what you were asking for. He, his response, and I talked to him, was that, well, the conditions were about the road, not the, not the pile. But I told him, well, we've been getting all these complaints about the pile, and I didn't, hadn't seen the picture yet, that the, that the, the grass swale is not grassed.
No.
That's part of the, part of the project, is the drainage, it's got to have grass in it, or it doesn't do anything.
Okay, so we want, we want Ed, mark the picture that you want Ed to mon, we want Ed to monitor.
Well-
While we release the two thousand dollars with-
When I, when I talk about pictures, okay, there's, he's got a picture of the potholes being repaired. This one here-
Yeah, I, I agree with you.
Is a picture of no grass in the bottom of the grass swale.
Okay, so why don't we mark-
Picture of a sprinkler. There's one other picture that I want to refer to you to, and hope you saw, as it went by, and it is, no, the very same picture. There's a giant mound, full of plants-
They took one mound away, and they left that one.
Half of a dirt pile, right there, and, and even the grass on the side is not really growing that healthy-
Okay.
On this, whatever this is. So, yeah, this particular picture-
So, why don't we ask Ed Pesci to keep monitoring that area, and, and we're not happy to close it out until there's significantly more grass at this area.
Well, but you guys are operating on different assumptions about what you're securing, because he's not thinking that those mounds are any, any business of yours. Matter of fact, he said, well, that's up to the building inspector.
I'm not talking about the mounds. You're saying that we shouldn't release the two thousand dollars because of that.
Oh, because you don't have, you don't have the grass growing in the, in the-
So why don't-
The other swales look like-
Do we agree with Tom that we shouldn't release the two thousand until that grass in that area is, is established? So, so Ed needs to keep-
That's what I'm hoping happens next spring.
That's okay. Yeah.
All right, just as you know that.
So, we're not going to really, my suggestion is we keep the two thousand until that area around the drainage is, has more grass.
And you know what, it's not just around, I mean, it's the bottom. You were saying, have Ed keep monitoring, I mean, you're going to be paying him a lot of money for nothing over the winter. I mean, Dennis could as easily drive by and look at the thing as he's on his way home, you know?
I go there a lot to check it out.
Well, he used to tell Martin to send us a picture of when the grass is in.
Derek doesn't charge a hundred ninety dollars an hour to, including travel from where he's coming from.
Look at it till then, that's all.
I'm sorry, I was speaking-
If he wants his money back, he has to prove the grass is in.
Yeah.
Period.
Okay, so, is that a motion?
That would be my motion.
Second.
All on the paper say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Michael, you got us there. Now, what do we, what can we do about the mound?
What's the deal with the mound?
That was the ma, a lot of complaints.
Did you break it down and flatten it out and put some grassy?
Attractive nuisance, if all kid has to do is drown in that or suffocate.
Didn't you send a letter to the building inspector about the attractive nuisance?
I got, I got something back from him.
Yeah, I mean, you did what you did.
We have a planning board outing, we get shovels and rakes and go down, we could do it in half hour.
What did you get back from the building inspector?
Don't bother him.
I'd have to look it up. He's been notified. He, he acknowledged that we notified him that we feel it's an attractive nuisance. That's what I got back.
Oh, he confirmed that he got it.
He confirmed that he got it.
Not that he was going to do anything about it.
I don't think, I don't think I got like a performance summary from him, no, I did not. So, it's really, it's, it's really, you know, the building commissioner, and the building commissioner's boss is the town manager, so we're not the building commissioner's boss. We can give the building commissioner information, but we can't, I mean, he's our enforcer, but we, we're not his boss. He's our partner in all of this, but, you know.
Well, I mean, if this is covered by, this, this is a special permit, if it's covered, as you remind, by a special permit, he is required to enforce your special permit.
Yes.
I think our special permits from this point on are going to say that unbuilt lots cannot be used to store, to store dirt, construction material, you know, construction equipment.
This, this thing is so old that, I mean, I was on, I was your planner when this thing was done, what, ten years ago at least?
I don't think there's any condition on a special permit that is being violated by that mound.
I don't think so either.
So.
But the grass in the bottom of the grass swale is a violation.
Yes. Okay, so onward. Old Business Review of Draft Housing Production Plan. So-
Who's going with first?
You got, at the last meeting, you got a copy without any red lines. It was delegated to me and Tom to redline it. Tom-
Me?
Yes, that's what happened. I have red lines. If Tom has any red lines, he can get them to you ASAP. I'm not sure that's going to happen.
I don't have red lines. I've been marking up a physical copy, and I've got this far through it.
Right.
And part of my discussion with Rodney about continuing is that I can't be doing this kind of stuff.
Right.
I'm keeping your board alive for meetings, but I'm not-
Right. So, what I decided to do, with that information from Tom, that I received last week, I decided to give you what I redlined. So, y'all got it this weekend in some shape or manner, and I even, I even found Michael's house after directions from, from Dennis. So you-
We found Dale's house, though.
I, I, we found Dale's work. So, anyhow, I don't know if you had time to look at it.
Ed, I was reading some of them.
Um, if you want to go through page by page, or what?
Well, we're not going to go through the whole thing tonight, are we?
Along with the other two things.
Yeah, I've got, like, maybe fifteen minutes on my, what I want to do.
What do you mean? Oh, okay. Do you want to workshop on this, like, on a Saturday morning?
Hell no.
Excuse me.
But you won't, you're not involved? Or, I mean, or do you-
But I do have markups, I have comments on this, as far as I got.
All right, so, do you, do you want to spend fifteen minutes on this?
Let's go as far as we can, you know, reasonably go.
All right, so, the first red line I have is on II.
Aye, aye.
What you're saying there, if I understand it, is gentrification in the Wampanoag communities, the surrounding community, where affluent people are displacing lower-income residents. That's, you're saying, one example of gentrification.
Well, right, so it talks about, it, right, it, it talks about how most, most tribal citizens live outside of Mashpee, and I thought that, that we should, you know, I'm always like, you know, you've got to really make it so easy for people to understand, that there should be a comment in there that, that the lack of housing choices has caused gentrification of our Native American population. Like, that's proof.
Gentrification of our Native American population?
I don't know.
That's not right.
You guys are gentrified now?
Displacement?
Yeah.
Okay.
They've been displaced.
Sorry.
But, you know, most of the tribe has not lived in Mashpee for many, many years.
The land, the residences have been gentrified, but the tribal has been displaced.
And I hear that a lot, that when people move back to, to Mashpee, tribal citizens move back, they go, I was so lucky to find something in Mashpee. So there's something there.
If, if, if they want to move back.
Definitely. There's, that's true.
And they got to think of what's, what's many years, right? Many years for my grandparents, it wasn't that long ago when everybody lived here, right? But, um, many years to me is, yeah, a lot of us moved away.
Well, I remember Swift Turtle lived in Boston for most of his life, where he came down here and started the whole tribal council and all.
So we good with the word displacement? All right, well, this will go back to the consultant.
Can I, can I throw something in, not to offend any of the Wampanoags, for the last thing I want to do is, I mean, this affects a lot of other people, too. You have all these low-paying jobs in Mashpee, and there are, all the houses that are, all the new houses that are being built are extremely expensive houses. Nobody's building the kind of houses we used to have. I mean, Mashpee was a cheap place in the eighties, because there were normal houses being built, you know, capes and things like that. My neighborhood is like, you know-
Yeah, my neighborhood.
So, I mean, it's actually, and you can see it in the assessed valuation that came up when we were doing the top three hearing, was that we went from five hundred thousand, next year, seven hundred thousand, next year, eight hundred fifty, you know?
So that would be under the next page.
That's because all of those new houses are all million and a half dollar houses in it.
So that's on, that's on the next page, under housing characteristics.
Okay, Mary, on that, on the, on the paragraph-
So if you want to, if you want to add that, that would go on the next page, triple I, under housing characteristics.
Housing characteristics?
And I, I think both things can be true, Tom.
Oh, I see that whole, that whole, that whole point, that whole paragraph is about the tribe, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so, so, but what you're talking about would fall under housing characte-ristic-
Housing or, or resident characteristics, or-
Well, we don't have that title, so it would go under housing.
Where is that?
It's on page triple I.
Yeah.
I don't know, yeah, on the top, it's in blue. It's, it's the blue banner as the title.
On the right side of the group.
Very top, very top.
So, so, we're, we're in that, are we talking about-
Your comment that you just made would, you can add that as a bullet point under that section.
Housing characteristics.
So if it's not there, you can add it as one of your red lines.
Yeah. I would, I would add that to the fourth bullet point.
Okay, one, two, three, four, okay.
Right.
As, as an effect of what that bullet point is saying about the value, the price of the houses, the-
Yeah.
You know, the new homes.
Okay.
That's the point I was making, was that the new homes, I mean, all the builders are building are over a million. Nobody's buying, building a cheap house. There's no Dacey Homes around anymore to build, to build my, my neighborhood, you know, the little-
I may have that day.
Little ranches and things.
Okay, so we can say newer homes are typically larger and more expensive.
Well, yeah, that's what it says.
Significantly more expensive.
It already says that, but I'm just saying, add a sentence after-
Okay.
-that thing, that, this, this effect is pricing out, you know, people making the, the normal Mashpee income, or whatever, you know, the lower-income people in Mashpee can't buy a house, because that's what's happening.
Yeah.
All the homes built since two thousand are expensive.
Okay.
They're just making it worse.
It's just open-ended right now, he wants to close it.
Yep, I got it, got it, yep. Good, good comment. Okay.
On the next page-
Oh, I'm not done yet, on page three. The one, two, on that same section, one, two, three, four, five, what, what they didn't clarify in this is that those are the subsidized multifamily rental housing choices. There are multifamily housing in Mashpee that are not subsidized or affordable.
Where are you reading that?
Is this little red, red?
Subsidized?
Wait, no, the, the red.
I see the little, am I on the right page here? Provide citation?
No.
It's under housing characteristics, fifth one down.
Most of Mashpee subsidized, you're going to insert a multifamily rental housing.
Triple I, oh, triple I, the fifth one down. Oh, got it, subs, yes, yes.
So, so what was happening with this plan, there was, like, people were not recognizing that we do have multifamily housing. I live in multifamily housing. Rob lives in multifamily housing. He lives in a building with more than one unit, right? I live in multifamily housing. Rob lives in multifamily housing. He lives in a building with more than one unit, right? Mine, mine is market rate, Rob's is market rate. So, when you say, "Most of Mashpee subsidized multif-" I mean, I mean, when you leave that word subsidized out, it's saying that my unit in Rob's home is eligible for the state's subsidized housing inventory, and that's wrong. It's not, it's not. My, my unit, my condo unit does not go on SHI, so you have, they have to put that subsidized burden.
Not only that, but if you look at the rules, it had to be constructed with a subsidy. I mean, if a house is just meets the price requirements, it doesn't go on the inventory. It had to be constructed with a subsidy of some sort, whether forty B is a subsidy or some other kinda, you know, like, the, the housing authority gets subsidies.
Right. So, there was kinda, like, Windchime is multifamily housing. Southport has multi, there's, you know, there's a lot of condos. Quashnet Valley, Pheasant Run, you know, the, the, and this plan kinda glossed over that they didn't, they didn't recognize those units, 'cause I think there was a, there was an emphasis to kinda make it as though there was no multifamily housing here. But there is multifamily housing here.
The, and one of the previous dots there says they may have more than the rest of the Cape, a higher percentage than the rest of the Cape.
Right, well, that's what, the Cape Cod Commission, remember the Cape Cod Commission faxee? They documented that. So, anyways, okay, is that good?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Okay, and then?
Mary, I apologize, but Dear Mashpee Community, that has no pagination on it, and I don't know, is that, is that right, the next thing? No, I four, and then where does this one go? Starts Dear Mashpee Community.
Yeah, that's the letter from Alan Isbits. I don't know if that's gonna stay in this plan or not.
Okay, well, the thing is.
This, this, this letter is from Mash, is from Alan Isbits, the former chair.
Yes, I see that.
Okay, I don't, we can't change that, we didn't write that. I don't know if it's gonna stay in the plan, quite honestly.
Well, isn't that, aren't you supposed to include comments received on the plan?
Yes, and those are on the.
But not in the body, yeah, not in the body of the plan.
This, this was submitted on behalf of the Affordable Housing Committee, okay. Thank you, Alan, that's his letter to us. Now, we're working on this plan to make it so that it'll, it'll get approval from the planning board and the SLU board. 'Cause it wasn't going that way. It was gonna get voted down, so we're trying to make it. Right. Um, so, the next red line is just proof, um, some documentation for the subsidized. I'm not thinking that the consultant's gonna change anything.
What does one hundred forty-two units is not the majority mean? You know, and we're still in that same fourth item, right, or, what is that, one, two, three, fifth item?
What are we on?
One hundred and forty-two units are.
The same page, page three, the big red stuff there, one hundred forty-two units is not the majority. Mashpee has ten thousand seven hundred fifty-seven dwelling units, sixty percent are occupied.
When you add, when you add a hundred and ten and thirty-two in the paragraph above, it comes to a hundred and forty-two.
Yep.
Okay, so they're talking about, um, I, I just wanted, I just, I just wanted to make the point that these are subsidized units, um, and then that, that they know, they don't represent the majority of multifamily units in the community.
No.
I'm not expecting to, I'm just putting that in there to, quite frankly, push back to some of the claims of the, the, this document.
Um, the, the, um, when you talk about Mashpee Village includes hundred income-eligible apartments, I mean, it also includes, um, thirty-four income-eligible single-family homes. It's a hundred forty-four units on our SHI.
How many, um?
Forty-four altogether.
So, thirty-four?
Yeah.
Single-family rental units.
Apartments, but the single-family homes are wrapped around, bring it up to a hundred forty-four.
But see, she was only looking at multifamily. Her paragraph is about multifamily.
Multifamily is multifamily. All right, what's the next one?
Okay, I'll make a note to clarify that there are thirty-four single-family detached rentals.
Hey, something just popped into my head, the, there are, um, quite a number of very affordable, uh, units out behind the former Zacharys.
Right.
I mean, those are clearly affordable, but they don't figure, see, that's another example of they weren't built with a subsidy, so they don't count towards affordable housing SHI, which is sorta crazy.
We have to make sure that there's an action unit in here about redeveloping, um, underutilized and blighted properties.
Well, but I mean, they're, they're livable right now, it's just that you have to understand that nothing counts unless it was built with a subsidy in the first place.
I know, I know that.
That was built a long time ago.
And that they have a lottery. Right, they go on the hu, they go on the subsidized housing inventory, if they.
Those don't.
If they have a subsidy, and one of them can be a technical support from the town, um, they're lotteryed off. They are rented or sold at a reduced price to income-eligible households. So, yes, I get that those units, they might be cheap and inexpensive, but they're not affordable.
And the whole old motel is all apartments, I mean, those are, you know.
But that's a prime spot for redevelopment, so we have to make sure there's a redevelopment action in this plan. I think there is.
Well, is it, isn't there some other thing you can do with, I mean, I don't know, the guy owns it. I don't know if he's ever gonna build his appliance store, he's already lost any kinda commercial grandfathering there. But, um, isn't there some kind of, um, program or whatever where we can go in there and, I don't know, give them some subsidy to, you know, to get them on the list, for repairing them for something like that? You don't tear them all down, I mean, it's perfectly reasonable.
I think that if the state came down and inspected that, um, that site, they would see that as a prime example of something that they could help with, um, a complete demolition and new construction. Um, that, that's the exact kind of place.
Demolts are only SRO housing in the town.
They can re, they can rebuild with SRO housing, with low-income housing tax credits. I think the state wouldn't want to spend money rehabbing that property.
Agreed.
I think that, I mean, I, I.
It's a historical property.
I was just about to say that. I know there's some historic value there. Um, um, but I don't think the, the, the Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities would come down with any type of significant funds for that property without some major demolition and reconstruction.
What if the, what if you got some CPC funds, would that be considered a subsidy to just upgrade them in place rather than spending billions to rebuild something that's already there?
It's, you, what I, what people tell me, and I could be wrong, is that when people do a major rehab and they, they, they don't knock down and rebuild, but they do a major rehab, they end up spending more, and they say, "It was a disaster, I should've knocked the whole damn thing down," because every wall they move, they unveil other problems.
I didn't use the word major in my statement, I just said, "Fix them up a little bit with a, with a subsidy, just to get them a subsidy so they qualify." 'Cause they're ve, serve a very useful purpose now, I mean, you know.
It's something to look into.
It's something to look into, thank you.
Let's keep it moving, man, because.
Yeah, close that loophole.
Okay. Um, and then I just, I just have, convert the word "community" to "town" and then put in thirty, okay, I'm on the next page, unless anybody has any comments on, um, triple I.
On the bottom paragraph, on, uh, Roman numeral three. Affordability gap of three hundred thousand, that last paragraph.
Mm-hmm.
We, I think we learned from the tax exemption that the average, is it the average or the, it's the average? Sale price is nine hundred and some thousand dollars now.
Okay, yeah.
So, I, don't we need to kinda rewrite this, 'cause I'm not sure I understand this? Affordability gap of three hundred thousand.
You're medi, it, it's, it's in here later on, the median, um, sale price in Mashpee is not the average.
No, I know the difference between median and average.
And the three hundred thousand comes from the median, not the average.
Wait a second.
But is that, is that a correct number?
So.
It is.
An income-based number.
Three hundred.
Yeah, there's a three hundred thousand dollar gap.
Yeah, that was a gap.
If you look up median, the median, um, sale price of a house in Mashpee, you're not gonna get nine hundred thousand, you're gonna get about six hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. It might have been, it might have been, um.
Maybe six fifty.
I think it's a higher than that.
Six fif, six fifty.
Saying that the, uh.
I mean, we can mark that to make sure it's still current.
The price is six hundred thousand median, but the family average family can afford three hundred fifty thousand.
Usually it's two hundred fifty.
Two million dollar range.
So, I'll mark that to make sure it's still current. Okay, good call, Karen, thank you.
Yeah.
Three and a half ones and then two and a half.
Anything else on Roman numeral three? Thank you, Karen, for correcting me.
I didn't correct you. We don't know.
In a very nice way. Okay, Roman numeral four.
Yeah.
I have that, um.
Lot of stuff.
Yeah.
I have a lot of, a lot of markups on mine, too, so go ahead.
Yeah, this is the place where, you know, we, we, "The barrier to development is polluted water, environmental sensitivity, lack of building land, buildable land, and protective zoning designed for growth management and water protection, limited wastewater and stormwater infrastructure and sole-source aquifer." I felt that this was glossing over that, that, you know, our protective flow-neutral bylaw was a barrier to development. No, it's a response to development, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Um.
Six hundred houses a year back in the eighties, that's what happened in Mashpee. And they were cheap back then.
So, I mean, on that column over to the left, is there anything, do you agree with these, or is there anything you wanna strike?
I agree with them.
Agree.
Well, I'd put a, I'd asterisk on the lack of buildable land, that's because the town has been so rapidly overdeveloped that they used up all the land, I mean.
But that's a ba, that's a barrier of.
It's not a barrier, it's a result of all the too much, too much, all the buildings, I mean, there's no land left.
It's a barrier, you can't build, it's still a barrier.
Now, but, you know.
It's a barrier.
Yeah.
It's a barrier.
Are we comfortable with number four, protective zoning designed for growth management and water protection?
Well, um, I wouldn't say that it was designed for growth management, because it was designed, our zoning, the one and two-acre lots, that was designed specifically for drinking water quality protection.
Okay.
Um, that's when the, when, in February eleventh, nineteen eighty-five, when we adopted acre zoning, um, at the recommendation of the county, uh, planning commission, not the predecessor, the C- Cape Cod Commission, um, that was for water, drinking water protection, but also works for groundwater protection as well.
So, changed number four to protective zoning designed for drinking water protection?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, uh, you could leave it as just water protection, but it was drinking water what people were talking, thinking about at that particular time.
Put water protection.
Because of nitrogen, uh, nitrites causing blue baby syndrome, that was the big thing, and that's where the acre, what the basis for the acre zoning was, that came from the county, based on studies they'd done in Long Island, where they had exactly the same problem.
All right, are we comfortable with limited wastewater and stormwater infrastructure?
Oh, I'm sorry, I would just delete number six, sole-source aquifer, I mean, it's, they call the whole Cape sole-source aquifer, even though it's not, there's multiple lenses, but.
Are we good with?
I agree.
Are we good with five, limited wastewater and stormwater infrastructure?
Um, can, you want, can I inter, interject my stuff on, uh, the one above that? Talked about, uh, that town must develop a watershed management plan outlining how Mashpee will meet its nitrogen TMDLs. The town already adopted that, developed it, took fifteen years, adopted it, approved by state in two thousand fifteen. To say that we must develop one is garbage, we already have one.
Which bullet point are you in?
The, the, the second one, the bold at the bottom of that. We already have that plan.
So, to be granted a twenty-five-year reprieve.
Twenty-year.
Twenty-year. We must, don't we have to apply for a watershed management permit?
Yes.
We have it.
But we have the watershed management plan outlining how we would meet the nitrogen TMDLs, that's what all the work was done.
So, to be granted a twenty-year reprieve from these new Title V requirements, the town has developed, must have a, I know it's a watershed permit, but I'm missing words. Watershed nitrogen management permit?
No, no, it's a watershed permit is the term, and what that is, it's an agreement between all the towns in a watershed, which we already have with, by the way, Sandwich and Bassett for Papa Nessa Bay. That was adopted and signed by the Selectman eight years ago as well. I don't know why they're starting work, working on another one, but it's this, we already did that. Uh, Wacoit Bay and Salworth has always been the sticking point.
All right, so, just change that to must have a watershed permit, period.
Just take the available.
Okay, are we good striking bullet point number three? It caused a lot of.
Must obtain a watershed permit.
Must, thank you.
And, and you might mention that there's two of them, one would be for Papa Nessa Bay and the other would be for Wacoit Bay. I mean, there's two permits, so.
Okay. Yeah, the next bullet point caused a lot of angst, we don't need it. And then.
What's the angst?
People don't want changes to the flow-neutral bylaw to be in the HPP.
No, they can't be.
Thank you.
The only reason we're getting zero-interest, uh, SRF loans from the state is that they required us to adopt that bylaw, which is their format.
That's the angst, so.
We can't not enforce that.
Right, so we need to cross number three out.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
And then my, and, um, the little note underneath it, we can just cross out. The next one, the next one, I, I wanted to cross out, 'cause I don't think it's accurate. The town zoning does not currently allow housing types other than detached, single-family homes or accessory apartments outside of the open space incentive development bylaw, which has not been used.
Outside of it, I mean, that does allow it.
Right.
And it has been used.
So, I don't know if you can salvage that bullet point, Tom, but the way it's written right now, I don't like it at all.
No, I mean, it's, 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 it's totally ignoring the OSID bylaw, which is the only bylaw we have for large, you know, mixed-use developments, I mean, it was written with Mashpee Commons in mind. It was amended multiple times at Mashpee Commons' request, and yet, when they go to do a project, do a forty-B, now they complain they can't afford the forty-B, 'cause they can't say, afford to set aside twenty-five percent affordable housing, so.
So, I think this is my attempt at replacing that. Currently, the town zoning allows for detached, single-family homes, plural, and it should say, "And accessory apartments," period.
And multifamily housing.
Okay, but only in.
But I don't know what, only in the commercial area, that's not true.
No? So, where is multifamily?
Can be done, um, um, but, you know, it can be done all over town. It, the only, the only restriction on the location is it's gotta be located, the access is gotta be located on one of the main roads in town.
Multifamily housing is allowed.
One fifty-one, one thirty, and Mashpee, Great Neck, north and south.
Okay, so finish my sentence. Multifamily housing is allowed.
You were saying just "and multifamily housing," period.
Yeah, why do you have to go into that?
Okay, great, done.
Period, multifamily, and multifamily housing, period.
Period, thank you.
Um, this thing about, uh, nineteen ninety, the town set a population target of fifteen thousand.
Yeah, you can cross that out.
The co, you crossed that out, it's.
You can, if you don't like it.
Well, no, I'm just saying that, um, that's the comprehensive plan, obviously nineteen ninety-eight, and I believe the target was eighteen thousand. and I believe the target was eighteen thousand.
Fifteen.
But, well, whatever, uh, from a zoning bill, it was sixty-eight thousand. The sixty-eight thousand was way back before we went to acre, it was like, we got rid of that number. When I, when I got here, the zoning, uh, allowed for a population, I think it was fifty-eight thousand that I calculated. And after the Selectman pushed the, and the commission pushed the acre and two-acre zoning, that was brought down to a much more reasonable level. I mean, before then, we had minimum lot sizes of ten thousand square feet and twenty-five thousand square feet. And, um, that just didn't work.
Okay.
So, the comprehensive plan didn't, in other words, reduce anything from sixty-eight thousand. There wasn't, first of all, there never was a sixty-eight thousand, it was fifty-eight. It was the zoning back in the eighties that did that. So the way that sentence is written, you know, set a population target of fifteen thousand from a zoning bill of sixty-eight thousand.
Okay, I can just cross it out, it doesn't really.
Just, just get, just get rid of the sixty-eight thousands from a zoning bill out of sixty-eight thousand residents, because that wasn't the comprehensive plan, that wasn't.
Um, then the next one, um, instead of bringing up the OSID again, it just leave it at, the town does not have a broad, broadly applicable inclusionary zoning requirement.
Yes, we do. Every single development in Mashpee has to have ten percent affordable housing, unless it's under five acres.
So the one that was.
Mandatory cluster requires ten percent, and the OSID requires ten percent.
I agree with this.
You agree with what?
That this, it's, we had a, we, when.
What?
We need an inclusionary zoning bylaw that it doesn't.
We do, we have inclusionary zoning written into our zoning bylaw. There's no need for any separate bylaw.
Can I, may I?
Okay, but, I mean.
Okay, the way an inclusionary zoning bylaw, it's not linked to one part of how units are created. It just says, if you create X amount of units, five, ten, fifteen, whatever, in any way, whatever way you creating these new units, ten percent of them have to be affordable, period. It doesn't matter how.
That's what our bylaw does.
No, it doesn't, it's only on the under cluster subdivision.
Except under those two provisions, the cluster or the OSID.
We just had.
Or forty-B.
Okay, well, I, I want that to stay.
Well, but it's wrong.
I think we can have, I think we can have a more general inclusionary zoning bylaw that we don't have to worry about.
What will it do? That isn't already being done.
Okay, well, it's, it's.
Single-family home are covered by the cluster, by the cluster bylaw, which, for which we got a smart growth award from the state, and we get, and the multifamily run to the OSID.
So when we had, when we had a proposal.
What other kind of development is there to apply that separate bylaw to?
We had a proposal for an activity center bylaw, and it was very.
What was that?
Thank you. Tell them again.
You're talking about?
Yes, and there was some discussion about whether there was affordable housing required at the local level or not. If we had a general inclusionary zoning bylaw.
It is required. I mean, the discussion was Evan putting down the OSID bylaw because I wrote it, but I mean, he didn't know what he was talking about.
Tom, Tom, there's no way anyone can get a complete thought out, you just keep interrupting people, bro.
Who?
Her.
Harry.
She trying to, you asking the question, you trying to answer and you keep interrupting.
Well, no, she keep saying.
Doing it all day.
I keep saying things that are wrong. Well, all right, so anyways, we're leaving it in there. We're striking the rest of the, the sentence. Um, and then there's a footnote on the, on the bottom, number six, about the flow-neutral bylaw, which I just want to get rid of.
Okay.
Anything else on Roman numeral four? You want to stop here or do another page?
Let's go to the. One more page, because at this rate, we'll, we'll have this done by September twenty twenty-five.
Maybe.
Uh, the next page is Roman numeral five. I'm going to strike the word gentrification out.
Yes.
Yep.
Um. And then I wanted to add the provision of housing, for example, the provision of housing assistance and affordable housing lottery preferences.
Could we go back and skip the cross, when, with the cross out of the OSID and the whole inclusionary? You have a sentence on the left. Again, it, it says, uh, important to note, at the same time Mashpee adopted lot, larger lot zoning, it set its population target of fifteen thousand. Those are two totally separated things, separated by thirteen years in time. They weren't.
Yeah, no, you know what, when, when you were talking about the sixty-eight.
Fifty-eight thousand.
Sixty-eight.
Was what the town was zoned for when I came here in nineteen.
I thought you were talking about this little paragraph that you're talking about now.
No.
So I think we should just cross them both out.
Yeah. Well, both places where we crossed out the other sixty-eight, but, you know. Cross them out.
We're going to cross them out. Okay, um.
Yeah, because it's just not, not true.
That, yep. Um, so we're on page Roman numeral five, cross out gentrification, add the provision of housing assistance. This is like for an example.
So do for example, the provision of housing is.
Assistance and affordable housing lottery, spell it right, preferences. So when you have lotteries, you have local preference, so that will keep people here. Then number three, for example, a priority would be to hire a housing specialist.
Would that be ad hoc or full-time?
Uh, I don't know. I think we should.
Just keep it vague.
Yeah, yeah. And then, um, add, convert existing housing slash resort units to deed-restricted affordable units.
South Cape Resort is for sale. There's three associations there, they're all fighting with each other, and I'm told it might have actually already been sold.
One has been shut down.
The good side is shut down.
They froze, they froze that.
Yeah.
There's another vote coming up soon for another phase, to see if they want to do the same thing.
Town should be buying that place.
Yeah.
It's perfect. I stayed there when we first came here, and they upgraded them, they're pretty nice. Two-bedroom, up and down, some are down, some are up.
I agree.
Yeah, that's right, next floor, Claire.
Um, this is, this, so this is the property that you were talking about down the street, Tom? That would fall under that.
Yeah, I mean, you mentioned, your sentence is right on.
Okay.
Mentioned South Cape Resort.
All right, so we'll stop there?
Yeah.
Okay, Roman numeral five, okay.
All right, thank you.
Let me just say that I had one on that page five, I just had one comment under the affordable housing development. Um, I just sort of added a thought that the forty-B was approved, uh, in nine, two thousand and seven for three hundred and ninety-six, uh, housing units, of which ninety-two were affordable, that's the Mashpee Commons thing. Those are the numbers.
So do you want?
Two thousand and seven that was approved, that's.
Right, so.
What is that?
So that's one, one A.
Yeah, phase one is just a tiny piece of the, what was permitted.
So just take implementation of, they're comprehensive, they're two thousand and seven? You want to put two thousand and seven?
Seven, yeah, because, I mean, the only reason they started construction was that the state.
Period, get rid of the future plans for additional phases.
Construction of Market Street, that's why that section of Market Street is actually a town street, except the sidewalks are on the Mashpee Commons. And, um, the money was going to be lost if they did, and, and the forty-B permit was going to be lost because they didn't, you know, they waited so long. So they started foundations at the last moment possible to, uh, keep the forty-B permit alive and get that money from Dr., uh, God Devell Patrick, who came down and broke the ribbon.
All right, so we'll do ten more pages next time, study up.
What about the other two things you have listed?
Uh, yeah, I'm going to do those now.
Jeez.
Well, we'll do as many pages as we can, but at least ten.
Yeah.
All right?
Well, give me a couple of weeks to read more of the plan.
Let me go now, because I'm getting really tired.
Okay.
Anyway, this might be fun.
Oh, mine is really quick.
Okay, go ahead.
The AGU stuff is really quick.
Go ahead.
Uh, I talked to Rodney, and he said, and I forgot to tell Amy, but he, he said, um, just to, just to write him up a scope of work for KP Law, to look at that new affordable homes bylaw and make sure, see if there was anything in our bylaw that we had to change to come into compliance. I think our AGU bylaw does need to, but that, that's it, um, we're gonna, we're gonna kick that to KP Law, and if they say we have to modify our zoning bylaw, we do, if not, we won't.
Okay.
Okay, and if they.
They have the AGU bylaw, yeah.
Right, but I think we have to tweak it. I just want to make sure we don't have to tweak anything to be in compliance with state statute. Okay, now, so Karen is going to take over for raise and replace.
Okay, well, we're, we're all, with the exception of this young man here, we're all old enough to remember what Will Rogers said. You can please some of the people some of the time, but you can't please all the people all the time. Okay? And that is what we are facing with raise and replace.
Right. I thought you were going to use the one that he said, buy land, they're not making any more of it. That's exactly what the problem we have, and we were talking before about running out of land.
We should put that in our HPP.
They're making any more of it, they're making a lot more too.
All right. So there is, and I dropped off for everybody a packet of what the materials I have thus far. On raise and replace, okay?
Oh, by the way, Orsi, he said he's putting something together, he's not quite done.
Okay.
But he will get it to us. I said, sign what you have, so we have something to look at. He said, I want to finish it first.
Okay, so he's working, so.
And by the way, Bob Orsi is the guy who lives in Papaneset Beach Association.
He's a nice guy, Joe.
He's a nice guy, he's been coming to meetings, and he has some background in zoning.
Right.
Right? So, um, anyways, okay, good.
Okay. Listen, when I first looked at this stuff, I said, what the heck does this mean? And now I'm getting a grip on this thing, and I'm going to try to go ease you into this because this is tedious, very tedious. The Papaneset overlay, the minimum lot size is six thousand square feet. As you know, those houses are really close together, the lots are small.
And that was based on the fact that all the lots out there are six thousand feet, uh, or more, uh, when the overlay was created at the request of the Papaneset people.
All right.
Okay, so this is the minimum lot size. The setbacks are the same on the land use table, uh, for other properties in Mashpee. Fifteen sides, rear, and, and in the case of Papaneset, it's twenty-five feet in the front. And the maximum lot coverage is tw- uh, twenty-five percent, maximum height is thirty.
Okay.
Thirty feet.
That was a big thing to the Papaneset people was, because the rest of the town is thirty-five. They were getting these monster houses built, overshadowing the low power. That's why the, they wanted the height limit reduced.
Okay.
Okay, and what did I leave that off? And the rest of Mashpee is thirty-five feet high. So you could write that in.
Okay.
Height. Okay, when you read the bylaw, it says, and I'll try to translate this, any dimensional pre-existing non-conformity, that means pre-existing before the bylaw, before this bylaw, meaning you're violating, in the case of, let's say, a setback, you've intruded into the fifteen-foot setback, say, as in this example, ten feet, when you're supposed to put your house fif- you have to have fifteen feet to the, to the end of the lot, right? So what you've done is, before this bylaw came in, you have created now, when they look at it now, a noncon, a pre-existing non-conformity. Everybody get that?
Yeah.
Yes.
And basically, what they're saying in this bylaw is, we can expand that non-conformity, we can, we can make it even worse. We can go eight feet, or twelve feet, or whatever, into that fifteen-foot setback.
But they, but it requires a variance on top of the.
That's right.
The finding.
A special permit.
It requires a special permit, not necessarily a variance.
The bylaws got two sections. The original section says it's treated like a special permit, but it isn't. And, uh, the new one, that seventeen point one, says it's a special permit, so which is it? See, that's the thing, there's a conflict between seventeen and seventeen point one that Evan wrote. It's not, it doesn't need a special permit under seventeen.
All right, well, maybe.
But it does need a variance in either case to get below, you know, or get closer to the.
Okay, let's, let's look at, um.
But that, but that's not what's happening.
That, yeah, that.
What's happening is just special permits. People are not asking for variances to.
With special permits, you have to have a separate variance.
Look at the, uh, language of one seventy-four dash seventeen point one. No pre-existing, non-conforming, single or two-family dwelling shall be torn down and rebuilt unless there's an issuance of a special permit on the zoning ZBA. Such a special permit may be granted only if the ZBA finds that any changes, extensions, alterations, or reconstruction of the pre-existing non-conformities are not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than exists prior to removal of the existing structure, and you got to have adequate land for parking. In no case shall new conformities be permitted without the issuance of variance. The way I read that is, new conformities, they don't call a new conformity if you extend, change, or alter a pre-existing non-conformity. They don't, they don't, you don't need a variance for that.
So they don't, so an extension of a non-conformity is not considered a new non-conformity?
That's right. And that, that's, see, that's crazy language, because, you know, if you, you're, you're violating the fifteen-foot setback, but now we can violate it a little more. It's the same non-conformity, you're just making it a little worse, and that is allowed. That's the way I understand it.
It's allowed by variance, though.
Pardon me?
As this says, it, in, in no case shall new non-conformity be permitted.
In no case shall new non-conformities, what I think they mean there is brand-new non-conformities. Okay, I, you know, let's, let's hold that, okay, because.
The strange thing is, extension is in fact a new non-conformity.
Well, some people would interpret it that.
Unless it meets the setback requirement.
But other people don't.
No, but I'm saying that's in the English language.
Right, but it's being.
Extension is beyond what is there.
But I think if we really mean that, we should put that in.
We have to say what we mean.
Well, I mean, I think the fact that it says extensions is not a new conformity is absolutely stupid. It is.
Yeah.
Right, I think we need to add something in there.
Yeah.
Clearly.
So now I'm going to ask you, you people questions and see what you think. Do you feel that a property owner should be allowed to increase a pre-existing non-conformity, generally speaking, or not?
No.
With a variance.
That's why they have variance.
With a variance, because there might be.
An extenuating.
Extenuating circumstance.
But I mean.
Yeah, topography or something.
We like candy, so they don't need the extenuating circumstances.
But that's the thing, we, you know, what we're looking for is clarity. What does that mean? What extenuating circumstances? I mean, we can't even articulate all of them. There could be so many, and what would be reasonable?
So with a variance, uh, within the, the guidelines of the guidelines. The setbacks.
They have topography, hardship, and something else with soil. Those are the three things that's.
Okay.
It's a lot.
Let me write that down.
But that's, that's the state statute, and, but, that's been totally ignored in Mashpee.
Yeah. Okay, so, so, so we are saying that, yes, you could increase the pre-existing non-conformity.
Only with.
Only with a variance.
Right.
Yeah, so it'd be.
Is that what you're saying?
It'd be, in, in no case shall a new, shall new conformities or extended non-conformities.
The way I understood it with, with Evan was that a new non-conformity would be something in, in addition to what we're talking about. This is a pre-existing, my understanding is you can extend it. It's still the same non-conformity, you can extend, alter, what's the language, or change it. That existing one.
You, you can't create a new non-conformity, because you have to get a variance. Once you've got a variance, you're legal. You're not non-conforming anymore, you got a variance from the ZBA. You're not non-conforming anymore, you got a variance from the ZBA.
Okay, so, see, there's where the part of the problem is.
It's all about pre-existing, you gotta remember, pre-existing non-conformity. And the problem with the ZBA is that they don't read the rules about the limits on granting variances. I mean, they're strict, and most towns, you barely, you know...
You're saying that a non-conformity created by a variance is no longer a non-conformity?
Right.
Really?
Because a...
Well, that's what he's saying.
Pre-existing non-conformity is something that was there before the zoning changed.
I'd love to see the zoning board try to figure that one out.
What's that?
I wish he hadn't said that out loud.
It's a valid statement.
Once there's a variance, that's not a non-conformity. It's been permitted by the zoning board of appeals. The problem is, the zoning board of appeals doesn't follow the statutory process and the restrictions on when you can grant a variance. They just grant them whenever, for no reason.
So can we, can we put that...
And that's just, you can't control the ZBA.
Well, I think there are partners here in solving this problem. So can you put, because it's in state statute, this thing about variances, can you put that same language in our zoning by law?
Why not?
Well, I mean, it's repetitive, but...
That's okay, that's okay.
Then it's all right there, so whoever's reading it reads that too.
That's right, that's right.
Does anybody get the by law with them? Because it may already be in there under the variances section.
I have it at home, but I don't have it here.
Okay, next question. Should a new by law, something we rewrite that by law, allow some growth to the part of the home that is pre-existing non-conforming? And I'll remind you what Evan suggested.
Yes, remind us what Evan suggested.
He said, you take, let's say you've intruded, I'll call it intruded, because I don't know how to, what word to use exactly, intruded into the 15-foot setback. Say you've intruded 10 feet, and the width of the house is 30 feet. Or let's just say you intruded 10 feet, just make it simple, and the width is 30. So 30 times 10 is 300. That's the pre-existing non-conformity square footage. And he was suggesting that you give them 40 percent, take 40 percent of 300, and that's 120 square feet, so now you could build an additional 120 square feet.
That...
In other words, well, I mean...
That's just, I mean, you buy right increases a non-conformity, but that's like the worst possible thing.
That's right, right.
Well, okay, I don't know. They're just, I think where he's going, where he was going with that, because there was so much conversation about having a ground floor bedroom, because the people can't walk up the stairs because they're too old.
Most of those houses are single, single-story houses anyways, the cottages out there that, you know, the whole thing was intended to preserve.
Okay, well, let's just say it's a cottage, it's a one-story.
Two and a half.
They could, but I mean, no, not two and a half, two stories only, not like the rest of the town.
Okay, so nobody likes that? You don't, you don't want to take a percentage of the non-conformity and say, okay, you can build this much more?
No, if you, if you have a house footprint here, and it's non-conforming, you know, 10 feet should be 15 feet away, and you want a bedroom, and you can't build, build it on the back and not have that non-conforming. Build it within the...
Okay, then that's another question. If you don't build it on the non-conformity side, can you take a certain percentage of it and build it somewhere where...
I think you can already do that.
The back and the side.
I think you can already do that. If you have a non-conformity and you want to expand, and you want to expand in the other direction, you can already.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
I wouldn't give 40 percent to a bad situation to make it worse.
You would not.
The whole point of that, the issue, is the impact on your neighbors. You're already crammed up against them, and they don't want you cramming closer.
Okay, then you're raising another issue.
Then you add two, a second story, and they're all shaded out from the sun and everything.
All right, so you, you built out, you're intruded 10 feet. So if you want to go up, you've got a one-story house, do you think it would be fair to start at the, move your line back 15 feet, and build two and a half stories? Is that fair?
No.
No?
Why would you, I mean, you're talking about making them chop off a piece of their house?
No, if you want to go to the second floor, you're gonna go back to the 15-foot setback for the second story.
Yeah. You're allowed two and a half stories.
That, I think, should be automatically legal if it meets the setback, yeah.
That's allowed, if you're getting rid of the non-conformity.
No, you're not getting rid of it. You've still got the non-conformity.
Not making the non-conformity any worse.
But you're not putting the second floor, you're, you're...
Not putting the second...
You're putting the second floor...
Houses that...
Lawfully, 15 feet from the side yards.
The building would be...
Yeah, you'd have like a dormer.
Okay.
So you like that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Yep.
I think they would, I think most people, they would be fine with that too.
Yeah, I do too.
Unfortunately, the people that are looking for these raise and replace things and all of that stuff, I mean, they're gonna build a million and a half dollar monster house.
Well, they can only build it so high.
Other people use raise and replace...
Lots are too small for that.
Yeah, other people use raise and replace with a reasonable new home.
Okay, now, if the property owner builds legally a two and a half story house...
Two stories over there.
Two and a half.
You can't go two and a half. 30 feet is only two.
They can't go over 30 feet, and they can't puff up the ground to...
Right, so it's only two stories.
No, it's two and a half.
Papaneset overlay just...
No, it is not, it is two stories.
If you're talking about only allows two stories, no half, like the rest of the town.
Okay, fine, geez, okay. So if you build two stories, now what if the way you've built your two stories legally at the 15 feet, you got a neighbor who's lost all sunlight and all sky because that building casts a big shadow on his property? The abutter is complaining.
Well, that's, but that's been the overlay, there's been 30 feet in the overlay district since they gave it permitted. They've always had 30 feet.
No, I'm saying 30 feet.
Requested in the late 90s by the people in Papaneset, and that's when I wrote the by law, and they got what they wanted in a by law, but then all these variances are being granted by the ZBA that totally obliterates the purpose of the Papaneset overlay that was requested by the residents there to protect themselves.
Part of the problem was, they were allowed to go higher within the non-conforming area as compared to back. That 30-foot high, if that was back where it should have been, it wouldn't be the same issue at 10 feet. Right?
Right, I mean, I believe you can, as long as your second story is, meets the setbacks, then there shouldn't be an issue.
That's right.
So the abutter who complains because you've taken his sky away and you've taken, it's too bad.
Think of the angle, if, I mean, if he's five feet away from the property line, this is 15 feet away. I mean, the shadow's gonna be exactly the same.
Non-conformity is so close to the lot line...
Yeah.
That they go up, and that's creating the shadow.
Right.
They went back within the setback.
You go within the setback, there's no shadow?
Well, you still don't have a shadow, but it wouldn't be, you wouldn't be looking out into your...
To a wall.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you, that's, you're fine with that?
I say that, but the lots are so small, it's kind of hard, period.
I have a little history, off, off the record or whatever. I looked at, my wife and I looked at a number of houses to rent while we lived in Australia, Australia for three years. Beautiful little cottage villages outside of Melbourne, Australia. And every now and then, the realtor would say, oh, we have lovely, you know, a three-bedroom apartment, whatever, and we look at it like, there's something wrong with this house. It's a one-story house with, in the middle, a master bedroom on the second floor and a bath, right in the middle. I said, why didn't they build it?
Well, that's cool, and you can have decks on the rest of the roof.
You can't build because of the zoning. If you wanted to go up to the second floor, you had to do, you had to, you couldn't go up...
Comply with the setbacks.
Yeah, and I didn't even know what a setback was, but the rules were, you couldn't build a full footprint, second, you know, second story on your house in that neighborhood. But you could build a reduced footprint second story. And they looked very, and they all had hip roofs. I'm not a hip roof person.
Did it look odd?
Huh?
Did it look odd?
It looked, we never rented one, it looked very hot, hip roof.
A lot of stuff in Australia would look odd to you.
And it's like a little house on top of a, a regular house. And it looked so odd.
I'd love that master bedroom, you know, because then your neighbors can't, can't look up that much. You're using the rest of your house anyway, and you use the roof.
You can look out every window at your roof.
Paradise.
Okay, you know, one of the big arguments that they make, people in Papaneset I'm talking about, and by the way, I think we should make the by law cover the whole town, not just Papaneset, as Evan thought. Say you have an elderly property owner, and let's say she happens to have a two-story house, but it's very small, and she wants to be able to go encroach into the setback to build a downstairs bedroom with an en suite bathroom. Should she be allowed to do that, or should she buy an acorn stairlift?
Acorn stairlift. Look at the campground in Martha's Vineyard. Bunch of little cottages, and they don't, they can't do anything outside of their current existing footprint. And, and I know a couple of people have a couple of rentals out there, or rent their properties.
Yeah.
And they tell me stories about, I just want to do this. And it's not historic nature, it's, you know, the zoning and the association just, common sense, you should be able to do it over there, nothing.
But that's the association probably, it preserved those little gingerbread cottages there, I mean, that's...
Some of the nightmare stories.
Fortunately, zoning can, does not have waivers because of age or disability.
Right.
If it's allowed for one, it's allowed for all.
Right, and a stairlift.
The point.
I can't imagine a house in Papaneset that doesn't have a bedroom on the first floor, because they're all either single-family homes.
That's right.
Or they have first-floor bedroom if they had a second floor.
That's, that's what they're asking for.
But I mean, no, that's like a theoretical situation that doesn't exist.
But there, but there isn't, you can't zone for age. I mean, you can't, you have to always allow...
It's for everybody.
Right, and you always have to allow, you know, the ramp, right, for safe egress.
That's the kind of thing where you would look for a variance that would be appropriate.
Right, but it, you can't say, well, you can only have a, you know, expansion for a bedroom because of some type of age. It, it, it's not allowed.
I used to live in Papaneset.
Yeah, Bob is gonna submit, he's gonna bring something in from Papaneset.
All the people there were old people, and they had single-story houses.
I know, we haven't, we're waiting for that, and we haven't gotten it, right, Mary?
It's still coming.
Billy Volte down the street.
So we, okay, so...
He said he wants to be reasonable, and I think he's going to be, about what possibly they would ask for, but we don't know what it is.
Okay. We've also been contacted by the building commissioner, you know, about this. He wants to participate. I said, we're just not ready yet, we're waiting for more input from the neighborhood, and that we will gladly workshop with him and the ZBA when we're ready.
Okay.
And he said, ah, thank you.
Can I make a suggestion? When you look at 17.1, also include 17, which it conflicts with.
Okay.
Which was what we had before this crazy 17.1 came in.
Okay, one more question on this, and then I'll just cover the two performance standards on Reg 25.
I don't want to talk about Reg 25.
You don't want to talk about it now?
It's not on our agenda.
Oh, because you didn't...
Is that a conscom matter?
It's not on our, it's not on our agenda.
You're right, it's not on our agenda.
But anyways, keep going.
Okay, so lot coverage in Papaneset is 25 percent. Hypothetical. You have a 1,200-square-foot cottage sitting on a 20,000-square-foot lot. Just hypothetical.
Not in Papaneset.
But of the 20, not there?
No lots that big.
Let me see if I've got another one. You have a poppy lot of 6,000, and 2,000 square feet is in wetlands. So you only have 4,000 square feet in upland land, right?
Well, then you don't meet the minimum lot size requirement of 6,000.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I'm, I'm talking about lot coverage now. I mean, this is just math.
Wetlands don't count towards your lot size.
What's that?
Wetlands do not count towards your lot size.
Only upland does.
I know, I know, I'm trying to talk, and nobody's paying any attention.
All right, all right, all right. Okay, we're gonna be quiet, what are you trying to say?
I have a 6,000-square-foot lot.
Okay.
And 2,000 of it is in wetlands, so I only have a 4,000-square-foot good lot.
Okay.
Okay, to build on, that I should build on. And my house, I have a house on it, which is 1,300 square feet.
The footprint.
The footprint is 1,300 square feet. So lot coverage is 1,300 over 4,000, which in this case equals 32.5 percent. I've exceeded the 25 percent lot coverage.
Yeah, because the house was there before we even had zoning.
Correct, but I'm partly in the floodplain there, I'm in the floodplain.
Okay.
So what can I do? I can only build up, right? Because I have to keep the footprint.
Well, I mean, you can leave it the way it is, you don't have to build up.
No, but if they want, can they expand their footprint?
I mean, there's not a right to expand to infinity, you know? Expand their footprint?
No.
They would need a variance to expand their footprint. But again, the lot size is not legal in the first place, if it's only 4,000 square feet of upland, but I don't think there are any lots like that.
Okay, well, then pick a different number. The only thing, you're keeping the same footprint.
You could go up.
But you can't live in a 1,300-square-foot house. You can go up, you can go up in the floodplain, but now you've got to put your house on pylons, and you got to have those sweep holes, you know, as we talked about, which is the law. Am I right on that?
If you were, what, more than 50 percent? Is that what you have to do?
What?
More than 50 percent? Does it tear it down and put...
I don't know what you're saying. Nobody in Papaneset is putting houses on stilts.
They're not, isn't that the law, isn't that the by law?
If, if, if the place wasn't already built before...
Okay, if you want to build a second story on this house...
You're doubling the value.
You're keeping the same footprint, what do you have to do?
Get a building permit.
And you don't have to worry about pylons or those flood, floods?
You don't, I mean, half, half the houses in Papaneset couldn't exist even on pylons, and mostly would have one story on the pil, on the pilings, not pylons, pilings. I mean, that's, if you go down to Florida, I mean, you know, I rent places in the Keys, they're all on pilings, and they're all one story.
I think you could go up without a problem. If you decide to raise and replace, tear it down, I think then you might have to put it up higher.
Or you increase...
Increase the...
Value of the home by 50 percent.
Something like that.
Increase the value by 50 percent, why?
You have to be 14 feet above the sea level.
Right.
So if you're a lot...
Well, it depends on where you are.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, if you're a lot 12 feet, you have to be, your foundation has to be four more feet above the...
Right.
If you tear it down.
Four points of a lot.
If you tear it down.
Tear it down.
Okay, so do we agree?
Raise and replace.
If all you wanted to...
She's only wants to go up, if she goes up without tearing it down.
I don't want to go out, I just want to go up.
Yeah, all right.
Okay, so we could do that, like a double-decker, like 1,300...[1721.58]
That's a question for the building inspector, it's a building code, flood code question for the building inspector.
I think if you get the permit, even if you're just going up, you may have to raise your house.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, you do.
Raising your house.
But that's a decision by the building.
Let me issue you a new permit. You're not high enough that you're violating.
Not zoning, we can't zone on that.
Okay.
All right, let's move on.
So, anyway, my understanding is that the Mass DEP, oh, I can't, I.
Yeah, let's not talk about that one, that's not on the agenda.
Okay, so, that's.
Can we talk about flood zones?
Flood zone?
You've done a great job of thoroughly confusing everybody, I want you to know that.
That impacts what you can do.
Well, I think one of the big, big issues that we're going to have to resolve.
What do you mean, Tom? I don't want to talk about Regulation 25.
I don't even know what that is. It's a conservation commission regulation.
He has some information about flood zones, so what were you saying?
The flood insurance act, you know, the flood insurance rate map, I mean, and don't forget, sea level is rising, so, you know, you're going to have to keep going higher and higher.
That's right.
We've got a height limit in town, and that's thirty feet in Pompaneset, so if you want to build those pilings, you can have a one-story house, as long as it's not thirty, you know, your one story is on top of the pilings.
Or you change the height restriction for houses on pylons.
On top of a garage with breakaway panels or whatever for a flood zone.
So when we, okay.
One other thing, and now that the mechanicals can't stay in the basement, if you have a basement.
Oh, you shouldn't have a basement, because a groundwater table is so high.
Well, okay, so it's, you have to move the mechanicals up to the first floor, now you've lost square footage for your living.
Now, so I hear, like.
You can't get flood insurance if you don't.
The percentage.
Yeah.
The percentage of lot coverage get a little weird when the land is subject to stormwater flow?
Flood, if it's flood, coastal floodplain.
Right.
Coastal.
So is there anything we can do to help people along with that?
There's one thing that the town has always ignored in issuing permits or anything, is as I said, you can't count wetlands towards your lot size. But DEP defines a flood zone as a wetland, and most of Pompaneset is in a floodplain.
Yes.
So they're in the wetlands already.
Okay, okay.
The whole point in Pompaneset, an existing situation, is to not make things worse for your neighbors, you know, because when you expand your footprint, the water's got to go into their yard, or somebody else's yard, you know, or they've got streets now flooding because they've got big houses that have bigger footprint, and there's no place for the water to go out of the yards, except in the street.
So, so, so if you're in these areas where you can't count, you're in the flood zone, you've already, you can't expand your footprint because you're already maxed out on your lot coverage.
Right.
Right, and my understanding is the way the ZBA has been interpreting that is that, oh, if you're already nonconforming, then they can let you do anything you want.
So is there anything that we can do?
That's a theory that's been put out there, as I understand it.
Oh, it's being, it's not a theory, it's practice.
Yeah, Corrine theory, yeah.
So, is there anything we can do in zoning that would clarify that?
What's your question exactly?
I'm asking, Tom, is there anything?
We, you know, again, the zoning bylaw says lot size can't include wetlands.
But is there any language that we can introduce in the case that?
They're like, they don't exist, but they're already there.
Right, in the case of this weird case, that you're considered a hundred percent in a wetland, because the flood map's changed, is there anything we can do with the zoning by law to clarify how that's calculated?
No, because that's all about flood insurance. I mean, the flood insurance rate maps are federal, and the insurance is federally subsidized. If you can't meet their standards, you can't get flood insurance, and you just, you know, you're on your own.
Now, you're asking.
It becomes this equation in their math.
Yes.
Where the denominator is zero.
Right, if it's, if you.
And it becomes undefined.
On your hundred percent floodplain.
And the ZBA is saying, well, that's a nonconformity, so they can expand that nonconformity. And, and.
Really?
I mean, is there anything, yeah, is there anything we can do to kind of get over that hump, where we know how to deal with a situation like that? So that we truly only have twenty-five percent lot coverage?
The whole point of the Pompaneset Overly District was to leave the cottages there just like they are, not build bigger houses.
Right.
That's what they were trying to stop, when the neighborhood.
Is there any reason why we wouldn't have asked for a joint meeting with the zoning board and talk it off?
Not yet, not yet, because we don't, I don't think we understand it enough.
Wouldn't that be part of understanding, asking them how they look at it? Because they don't want to act on it.
I think right now, I'm not ready to do that.
And I don't think they're unanimous, I think there's a split now, and now that people have built monster houses, they're in favor of monster houses, to bring up their value, as opposed to the people that were living there when the district was created, where they wanted to keep the houses small, and to keep the character of the neighborhood. That's why the limit on the height was reduced.
You know, you know what this is like? Taking this raise and replace bylaw, it's like a woman taking an old dress and trying to reconfigure it so she fits in it and she looks good in it.
I've made a lot, I've made a lot of friends and allies whenever I discuss this. This is my favorite topic, let me tell you.
I'm sorry, but I can't talk about an old dress.
Talk about old shorts, then.
If you're talking about old shorts.
Old shorts.
Thanks.
Some nice flip-flops, yeah.
All right, let's move on.
All right, good, that's good work. I'm going to send you something that, what I'm talking about.
All right, but the bottom line is, most places, there is no such thing as raise and replace, that's a creature, a monster that was created.
A monster, stop.
Really, I mean, it's a monster, raise and replace, there's no such.
I just want to ask one question, because then I must have missed something. If you have a pre-existing nonconformity, and you want to expand it, you have to get a variance?
You have to get a variance.
Is it always a variance that they give you?
Yeah.
Every time?
Sometimes you don't get it.
You want to expand this, you just want to make this nonconformity a little worse? You have to get a variance?
I believe that's true.
And there's.
But I can see, with the existing language, how there's a question about that.
Well, especially.
I interpreted it that you didn't. If it's the same variance, I mean, if it's the same nonconformity, you just make it a little worse.
So we need to, that's one thing we can do, is clarify that.
That's true.
By adding, before or after new nonconformities, extended nonconformities.
No, there's no such thing. A pre-existing nonconformity has to be pre-existing. Once you extend it, it's not a pre-existing nonconformity anymore.
Well, you've got to say what that means, it's never defined what a pre-existing nonconformity is, a pre-existing of what?
A pre-existing nonconformity was a setback or whatever that was there before either that we had zoning, which came in in nineteen sixty, and most of Pompaneset was built before that, and, or it came in before we changed the zoning to require bigger setbacks or something, and all of a sudden, you're nonconforming with the current regulations.
See, so it says such a special permit may be granted only if the ZBA finds that any change, extensions, or alterations of reconstruction of a non, of a pre-existing nonconformity of substantially, not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, okay?
But see, the whole premise is, is.
So how can we, okay, so how can we make it that changes, extensions, alterations of pre-existing nonconformities require a variance?
They do require a variance already.
But when you read this sentence.
How do we structure this to make it say that?
When you read this sentence, in no case shall a new nonconformity be permitted without the issuance of a variance.
What is a new nonconformity?
There is no such thing as a new nonconformity, though.
Well, that's what's in the language here.
Right, that's, I know, why do we change that, Tom? That's the whole thing.
Get rid of that word, I mean, you know.
What, the word new?
Get rid of the whole raise and replace.
So you want to say, in no case shall a pre-existing, no, that doesn't make sense either. That doesn't make sense.
Okay.
A nonconformity has to be pre-existing.
You know what, maybe we need.
The zoning bylaw or the zoning amendment that made it nonconforming.
Legal counsel to talk about this. We need to define terms, define the terms, what does that mean?
This was very helpful, even though we haven't gotten to the resolution of it yet.
It's not worthy, because it's talking about extensions, and then the next line later talks about removal of the existing structure. So it doesn't, it's not, the language is not consistent.
That's right.
That's right.
But that's what we're saying, the language needs to be more consistent, before we make any changes or any alterations.
You have to define terms, you have to know what the words mean.
But understand that a pre-existing nonconformity is the only kind of nonconformity there is. You can't create a new nonconformity.
Yes, you could.
No, you can't. You can get a variance to expend further and violate the zoning bylaw further, but you can't create a new nonconformity.
Well, you mean, they're not going to pass.
Because once there's a variance, it's not a nonconformance.
It's been permitted, yes, but I mean.
It's only, the new nonconformities only happen when you do a zoning bylaw change, and what you had, pre-existing.
Doesn't need a new bylaw.
Right?
Yep.
That's the nonconform, so you, I get what he's saying, you can't make a new nonconformity. This bylaw needs to change.
So Pompaneset is a case where it was almost all there before we even adopted zoning in the first place, so that, everything's, you know, pre-existing there, if it's nonconforming with the zoning that was in place then. Oh, by the way, you have to remember this grandfathering, too. When you buy a piece of property, and it becomes separately owned from all the land around it, the zoning that applies on that date, when you bought that, separate from all the rest, that's your grandfathered zoning. So you have to know that for every single lot down there, you have to look at the ownership history, to know whether or not you even have to meet the current requirements to begin.
Do they ever do that? Do they ever look to see what the law was at the time the person purchased it?
Well, I think they do, I mean, I've walked them, I've talked to them, I think they do, I think they have the information.
A good land use attorney would do that.
If there was no zoning, there's no such thing as nonconforming.
That's the easiest thing.
Yeah, all right, before the zoning, yeah.
So before zoning was even in existence, they built houses.
Everything that was built before nineteen sixty is pre-existing.
Yeah, right.
Before nineteen sixty.
If it doesn't conform with the current zoning, it's a pre-existing nonconformity.
All right, so that's, thank you so much.
That's the first kind.
Thank you for trying to.
Don't be discouraged, it really helped, and we're expecting some input from.
The Build Department.
No, from the neighborhood.
All right.
Then we'll digest that, and then we'll workshop. Sound good?
Mary, I want you to take a response, an assignment, would you define extension next time?
See, we need Black's Law Dictionary, all right. So we already knew business, we already did board engineer report, cheers activity, I went to the public meeting about community land trusts and housing land banks. The Cape Cod Commission has hired a really great consultant group on this, and some of the feedback was that, you know, we want to use, from the residents that came, that we want to use our existing structures for this work, we don't want to reinvent stuff, and we want, you know, to preserve our town's character, doesn't mean we don't want to ever build affordable housing, but that maybe these entities should have architectural site design standards, architectural standards and site design standards.
Based on what?
They asked that, and I said, I said, based on what people want here, like what the Cape Cod Commission uses.
But Cape Cod Commission uses, you know, okay, we want you to look like Nantucket. Mashpee Commons uses, they want to look like Nantucket. That's not Mashpee, Mashpee is tiny little houses, they're all, the older houses, they've got the gable in towards the street, and, you know, that's not what anybody's been built since then, so there's all kinds of different styles in Mashpee.
Well, that was what, I mean, I'm trying to introduce that topic, there are some pretty ugly modular multifamily apartment buildings being built in this country.
The ones in Mashpee Commons are modular, on Market Street.
That have really crappy architecture that are just blocks, okay? That's what I'm trying to get these people to understand, that we like Cape Cod vernacular architecture. That's all I.
But if it's supposed to be affordable, you can't get too fancy. I mean, you know, Mashpee Commons, one of the reasons they can't afford.
Yes, you can.
Twenty-five percent affordable housing is because they want all their houses to look like million-dollar houses on Nantucket.
No, if you, if your town is helping through a community land trust or a housing land bank, you sure as hell can ask for superior architecture, and that's what.
I thought the point was to buy existing houses, not build new ones, you said that, and that's been an idea forever, that.
That's.
Redevelop.
That's definitely an action step in our housing production plan, but the housing production plan also talks about new construction of housing. It definitely does advocate for the use of town-owned property for new construction of houses, and multifamily.
Well, we don't have too many pieces left of town property that's available for housing.
But I was extremely encouraged that they were listening.
Every time we found a lot that was suitable for affordable housing, we gave it the Habitat for Humanity, and then we gave them CPC money to help build the house.
They were extremely small lots, and could only, were only suitable for a single-family.
But they had to be under forty B, too, because some of them were like, you know.
If we ever got the opportunity with like six acres of land, you know that's going to be multifamily. I mean, Leclerc Village is multifamily, and it has architecture that the town prescribed for it.
Some of it's pretty ugly, if you go down there.
Yeah, well, some of the affordable housing that's being proposed is super ugly, and Leclerc Village is not ugly.
Well.
It's not, it's not.
Matter of taste.
It's not beautiful.
Right, but it, but it is not, I mean, I'm telling you, have you looked at eight-fifty Route twenty-eight, and across from the senior center in Bonstable?
No.
It is a square box with like blacks, black panels, gray panels, rectangular windows, with no like shutters or trim or anything.
You mean, it's a modern, modern architecture?
Yes.
There's nothing wrong with that.
Okay. Anyways, okay, that, that went down in flames. Town planner report, inspectional fees.
The whole idea of buying houses and selling them at a, you know, with a deed restriction at a lower price, that's been around forever, and that's the best idea, is just go on the market, buy the house, sell it for an affordable price.
Yes, I think that's in the HPP.
And subsidizes the.
That's one of the options in the HPP. But if you only have that option, you wouldn't get something like Leclerc Village, you know, you wouldn't have Asher's Path.
But, but, I mean, those are forty B, so that has nothing to do with our zoning.
But that's, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about a regional land trust and a housing land bank.
What does that mean? What does that mean?
Yeah.
Are they going to, are they going to like buy houses and then sell them at a reduced price, is that the point? What did they, how did they explain it?
A land bank is an organization that buys and sells land over time, over a short time span, right? So they go and they hold land and sell it for affordable housing. So if something comes up that, you know, for sale, they'll jump in and grab it for affordable housing, and they'll give it to, what, our big thing was that they give it to a local entity for the development, that it's not done by an off-Cape entity that doesn't, that won't use local architecture and what we want, what we want for site design. A community land trust.
Can I ask a question?
A land trust is an organization that holds land in perpetuity, they're the ones that kind of like create the housing, build the housing, hold the housing. So a land bank is something that quickly can jump in, because it has a bank of money or resources, that can quickly go in, let's say if a big parcel of land down the street that we just talked about went up for sale, and they had the two-point-five million dollars to do it, they could go in and buy it while everybody tries to figure out what to do with it.
And a land trust, who holds title to the houses?
A land trust is an organization that has a board of directors, bylaws, and they have like a nonprofit status, and they are like the holders of the developed property, they run the property.
Oh, who, what, how is, how are those houses titled?
Oh, they'll be deed restricted, affordable.
But who owns those houses?
It would be the land trust.
The land trust is the owner of the house?
It's like a realty trust.
Okay.
A land trust is a realty trust.
Okay.
But the land bank.
Yep.
Let's say go and buy it for two and a half million dollars. In order to make it affordable, they gotta sell it to somebody for, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars. Where does that difference in money come from? They gotta raise a lot of money from somewhere.
They do and they, the, the community partners that they need is like the community preservation committee that would have money and the, you know, the, the affordable housing developer who can get access to low income housing tax credits and financing from the state. Just like La Clair Village was done. They got local money.
That was free land to begin with from the town.
Right, they got, but they also got eight hundred thousand dollars cash from this town. They, yep, they got five hundred thousand dollars from the community preservation with a town meeting vote and they got three hundred thousand dollars from the affordable housing trust. They, they got eight hundred thousand dollars cash, they got low income housing tax credits, they got home, Barnstable County Home Consortium money, um, and they got, you know, state financing. So that's what the land bank would ha, would be funded with money to go and grab land that was up for sale so that a development deal like that could happen.
With those sources, a lot of them would just take the money and put it in the bank until they find a property?
Yes.
Or they're not project specific, those kinds of grants and loans?
No, they're not project specific.
They're holding it until that opportunity comes along. And their care, and the board of trustees or whoever they are, they make decisions collectively. Is this a good project for us? Yeah, that sounds good.
They're not town restricted. They're regional, right?
It would be a regional. This is one of the action steps for the regional housing plan. And they hired a consultant to, to, to figure out what people here wanted. I went there with that, remember, we said we wanted the local buy-in?
Yeah.
So I went with that as my big comment to make and the big comments that were made was that. I didn't have to even make that comment because other people made it and that it, it looks at a variety of different types of housing. Like it doesn't just do one type, it looks at everything. And people were like, oh, good idea. So it was supposed to be a happy report here. You can give that to Tom, you can hand that down to Tom.
All comes down to getting the money in the first place.
Right, well, they're gonna ask what they're gonna do. I can tell they're gonna go to the local CPCs and ask for, you know, five hundred thousand dollars each to bank in the land bank.
Is this the handout from the meeting event?
Yeah. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And then, and then.
That might be pretty easy to do. Go to every.
Every.
Town CPC.
Yep.
So they can take our money and spend it in Barnstable.
That's right.
Right.
So, and, but I was, I was pleasantly surprised with the consultant listening to us and I think they were really engaged. They, they were really gonna take those comments here, so, so. All right. Town Planner Inspection Fees Report.
Just that, uh, I should have brought you copies, but, uh, I drafted up two articles to straighten out the whole thing with fees.
Okay.
You know, to start with, whatever you adopted in twenty twenty-one is not reflected in, or twenty twenty-two is not reflected in the bylaws that are posted online. That was the first problem. I still can't figure out how to change them and the matter of fact, your subdivision regulations, half the regulations missing when you go online. All of the, all the drawings that Charlie Rowley spent so much time doing are not online with the rest of the subdivision regs. In any case, um.
Have you, have you gotten them up online?
No, I don't know how to do that. And I'm, and I'm, and right now I'm saying, let's fix this before we even try and just put the latest version.
Okay.
So, I mean, we have public hearings scheduled for both the special permit regs and the, um, uh, subdivision regulations on December fourth. The bylaw changes, uh, as I can recall is, uh, first of all, it's got this number in there that, you know, we, 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 uh, can only charge them a hundred and sixty dollars an hour for our consultant. And that's crazy because he gets a hundred ninety dollars an hour. So I took out the number like I said I would do and it just says, as required, right? And, um, there's a, a, a language in there that, um, has the town planner handling money. And here's a great situation where you don't have a town planner, you may not have one, so I added planning board chairman to that. Either the town planner or one of the planning, I don't know if it's a planning board member or the chair, but I mean, can take the money.
And take off.
No, no, it's gotta be a check made out to the town manager, as usual. And, um, there was one other thing I forgot, uh, one of, in this, one of them's got a little more, uh, change in it, but minor changes.
So can you, can you email those out to us?
Yeah, I, I, I had them all printed up, but then I, I, I thought, well, what the heck, um, I put so much in the piles today. Took me so long to put this packet, I didn't get done with the packet until like ten minutes past six, so, um, in any case.
All right.
Yeah, I'll email them to you.
That's great. Um, reports, Cape Cod Commission, no report. Charter review committee, we're meeting next in December. Community Preservation Committee, you saw on your desk, I think there were six applications. So look at them and.
Where are they?
I don't think I gave any to you, Tom. They were, um.
Well, thanks a lot.
They were the community, uh.
I got it now.
Yep.
Yeah, I got it.
Yeah, and so if you have any.
Questions.
Comments, you know, let me know. Because we're, we're meeting, we're starting to meet with applicants this, tomorrow night. And then we might be voting, uh, December eighteenth or nineteenth, whenever that Thursday is.
Better not be the eighteenth, the nineteenth would be the Thursday, yeah.
Yeah, so it's December nineteenth.
Big planning board meeting will.
We might be, uh, uh, voting on them. So what I, what I really want is like your strongest reaction. Like I hate this, I love it. Any conditions, any conditions you can think of, you know, um, you know, naming rights, whatever, whatever, um, for December fourth, because then I can bring those comments. And they, they tend to listen to your comments.
Is there any particular reason you left out your faithful town planner from seeing those? Can you email them to me?
I just didn't, yeah, I can email them to you, I just, I only made five copies.
You have six planning board members.
Four or five, but I have a copy. I have an original.
And was it a handout for this packet that the secretary should have? Or that was just aside from.
I can make, I can make another set of copies, um, and I forgot this.
Well, they're not listed on the agenda, so I guess she doesn't need them.
Well, it's, and, Community Preservation Committee. So this is the ZBA, uh, agenda for the eleventh and I just thought it was interesting.
I emailed those to you today, by the way.
Thank you.
Soon as I got them.
Sixty-eight Mercantile Way, the petitioner is Eric Clapper.
Who's he?
He's the gentleman that sent us the letter that we discussed under correspondence last time. He's the abutter to the industrial land.
I have.
Oh, you sent them.
I have them, I, you know, all of you today.
So he's appealing the decision of the building commissioner to issue the certificate of occupancy for his abutter. Because remember, he said the landscaping wasn't done to specs. So he's on the agenda for December eleventh, so.
If you waited long enough, everything would have filled in. If you waited long enough, things would have filled in, he wouldn't even know it, but.
So anyways, that was an interesting note. All right, design review.
Yes, we finally had a design review and it was a sign by Gavoni Forestry Products and I would have to tell you, it's the most beautiful sign I've ever seen. It's a wa, I'm sorry, I didn't bring it in. I had it on my table and I somehow didn't put it in, but, um, it's a big wall that's down there. It's a, um, in the, you know, evergreen, I think it's evergreen. And, um, it's a sign that's seventy-five feet long and what it is, it's got three, like, uh, pictures, three, um, trees look like evergreens in a row and then like a, like a swirl, it says Gavoni Forestry Products. And it's going to be brushed aluminum gold, Gavoni in gold and the trees are green. And, I mean, it's very, very classy.
Is that our Gavoni Dennis or something? Yeah, he's still around.
Yeah.
He used to be on the planning board.
It sounds really long, though.
It, it, there's a wall there. I, you know, I've never seen it, but.
The sign isn't seventy-five feet long.
The sign is seventy-five square feet.
Okay, I was gonna say.
A wall is like seven hundred linear feet.
All right, great.
So it's very impressive. That, that's Mark Connolly, the sign, sign man.
All right.
Beautiful work.
Great. Okay, uh, plan review.
No plan review, I know.
Environmental Oversight Committee.
No, meetings on Monday.
And Mary came through and got him the sample RFQ that Yarmouth used to get their consultant.
What does the Q mean?
Uh, request for qualifications. Is that right? Yeah, or a request for quotes.
Yeah, request for qualifications.
And the budget, it was twenty twenty-two and the budget was only thirty thousand dollars. So.
I thi, I think the Q's quote.
Quote, request for quotes, and I think that was because it was thirty thousand.
Oh, good.
But that will be up to the, you know, the procurement people in town, but it kind of gives you, um, an idea of what the scope of work is and the things you should ask for in a, um, open, update to an open space and rec plan.
Mary, of these funding applications, I'll read them tomorrow, are, are they, how many can you pick? I mean, could you, could you do all of them or how, do you have a limit on money?
Enough money in the fund.
I think there is enough mon, uh, money for all of these. These are not very, uh, big asks.
Well, big ask, this one, Richard DeSorge is asking for.
Four hundred thousand.
Four hundred and forty-one thousand, that a big ask?
Well, I'm talking about.
Considering that there's almost nothing that's been spent on historic preservation of CPC funds, there's probably a big pile of money.
I think there's money. I'm more concerned about, you know, another land purchase that's like millions of dollars, multimillion dollar land purchases.
That you want, we want to get.
Yeah, I, that, i, if another one comes in, we're gonna have to bond, you know.
All right.
You know what I mean? If another.
Has, has that particular one, I think you're talking about, have they gotten an appraisal?
I haven't, um, I, um, I won't know until tomorrow night.
Okay.
I, I forget who told me, but I think that the two point eight million isn't necessarily what we're gonna pay for that property. It's.
Don't you have to pay what the appraisal is?
I don't know.
If it came in la.
That was the appraisal, but I mean, the property sold like two, three years ago for seven hundred thousand dollars and now they want two point eight million. That's Jamie Reagan, the.
Yeah.
Big time real estate agent that owns it now.
Well, the, the town meeting voted to expend the funds.
Up to.
Yeah, that's the offer. That's definitely the offer.
And that's what the appraisal was.
Yeah, I don't know how it could be anything else. I don't know if he would accept anything else. So anyways, right? The Environmental Oversight Committee talked about, has talked about, um, starting a realty trust for open space where these discussions could happen, kind of like, you know, those negotiations could happen before the CPA application was submitted and the town meeting.
Gee whiz, that was supposed to be what the CPA was for. And the land bank before that was all money saved up for buying open space. What's happened to the CPA is that even though when people voted to bring it in, they thought it was for buying open space and it's turned into a subsidized high school football fields, uh, et cetera, because the way they set it up, the person who wants to sell your property has to do an appraisal and they have to ask you to buy their property. With the land bank, I was sent out to, to get properties, you know? And that committee, it's, I mean, it's backwards.
Right, and so they've identified a need.
Ready to go to grab the money because they threw in recreation on top of spaces.
So that's, that's, that's why the, that's why the Environmental Oversight Committee has identified a need to establish a trust for open space and conservation land in town to take the play, uh, take the place. You used to do that as a staff person. Most towns do it through a conservation trust and that's what we need. Somebody like the three hundred committee in Falmouth. So that's something that this was to be working on.
We had a land trust back in nineteen eighty-five, uh, the Mashpee Land Conservation Trust.
Yep.
Unfortunately, it, uh, fell apart after a couple of years because of a falling out between two of the selectmen that were on it and, uh.
Right.
The land was eventually given to the Conservation Commission that they did acquire.
So they've identified that need, it'd probably come up, you know, in the opens, the update to the Open Space and Rec Plan on how to do it, so.
Mark Robinson tell you how to do it. I mean, he's been begging us.
Yep, he came, didn't he come to the EOC?
Bugging us forever to set up a land trust.
I think, he came to the EOC and talked to them about it.
Yeah, no, he's the expert, but I mean, in, historically, since we didn't have our own land trust, the Arendah Wildlife Land Trust became our land trust. They, they basically did a lot of purchases in Mashpee, um, that would have been done by our own local land trust and they, and actually Mark Robinson through his, uh, Cape Cod Compact Conservation Trust was able to raise a lot of money to subsidize them and then they did fundraising and all that, big chunks of land over from New Washington, everywhere and all that.
Right.
You should come to an EOC meeting, Tom, and give us that background.
Hey, I, I'd have to be appointed.
All right, anything else from EOC?
No.
Um, Historic District.
Yes.
We need somebody to schedule a meeting for us. And it used to be Evans, it used to be Tom.
Well, no, it is Tom and, um, I finally, somebody dropped an application on my desk today.
Oh, good.
No idea where it came from, um, for new signs on the old Kenmark building there. And, uh, and I talked to the chairman.
Really, the two poles aren't enough?
Yeah, well, here's the thing, um, they, I hadn't seen any drawings or anything of what it was because, uh, who's the chairman? Brian Hyde.
Brian, yeah.
He, he had them fill out the application of, uh, certificate of applicability application and all the, all the other stuff and that's what came in, but I looked at the signs, it says they're in the same place and the same size as the Kenmark signs. And I actually called the guy and I said, I don't think you need to do anything. It's just a First Amendment thing. You could change the, the, the message on your sign.
All right.
And it's beautiful signs.
Yeah, the toys box.
So I, I'm gonna suggest that I think there, there's just a certificate of non-applicability that the chair can sign and do it that way and let the guy open up so he can sell some toys before Christmas.
Yeah.
Oh, is that the toy store?
Oh, I, I don't know.
That's why, there's like a little cottage, a plastic cottage in the front area and a